This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Fiscal Year 21 Grant Application and the prior year fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19, fiscal year 20, and CDBG CV either application or awards. We're recording this go-to meeting. If I've received comments by email, I would read them, but I have not received any to date. I'm going to go ahead and walk through our fiscal year 21 grant application first. We'll do this by PowerPoint. This will open the public hearing for fiscal year 21's grant application. Okay. So the purpose of the public hearings is to take public participation, citizen participation, early enough that we can roll it into considerations for potential activities. We are currently anticipating that the application will be due in March '21. Could be later in the spring, but they have, they being the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Commonwealth Overseer and Grantor, who receives the money through the federal HUD funds, or is the pass-through for the federal HUD funds, has stated that they do want to see awards go out at the normal time, which would be awarding in the fall of '21 for activities to usually take off in the following spring of '22. All projects have to meet national objectives. They either have to benefit low to moderate income persons within our town, they have to improve slum and blight based on surveys that we have completed on those slum blight target areas, or there has to be an urgent need. However, rare is it ever that we're allowed to use the urgent criteria. So typically, it's the low to moderate income beneficiaries or the slum blight target areas that we're working in. And over the last two decades, we've worked, the bulk of our funds have gone towards housing rehab and infrastructure. Of recent, more has gone towards infrastructure. Our average mini entitlement grant total per year has been approximately $825,000, assuming all things remain constant from previous years. We're hoping we'll get the same amount of funds following award year. You'll see here a list of what's called quote-unquote "activities" that we are eligible to apply for. Again, any activity has to be able to tie back to the beneficiaries. And so if we choose an activity, it is either based on improving slum blight from those surveys completed within our downtown target area or our Globe Village target area, or it's benefiting those who we have deemed as low to moderate income based on either surveys that were completed within a neighborhood or based on a census block group. We use some of the funds for program delivery and administration, and then we have three "activities" that we're allowed to pick that our funds can go towards. And this is new, as of last year, where we're limited to only three activities. Our target areas on the map here show the Globe Village and downtown slum blight target areas, and the based-on-low-to-moderate-income target areas are Crane to Main, Morris Coombs, Worcester Henry. Over the last two decades, we've done a good job of spending a lot of money towards infrastructure and housing rehab in the Worcester Henry, in the Morris Coombs and Worcester Henry target areas. New to the low-to-moderate-income target areas is this Crane to Main. The reason this was established was because we were trying to be, using our code enforcement funds, we were trying to be proactive about trying to benefit as many low-to-moderate-income residents as possible, and we were able to open up this as an area for a lot of code enforcement to be completed. If we were to take what, right now, we're proposing for a budget, this is how it shakes out by percentage, and this is how it often will look. It's about half of the funds will go towards a major infrastructure project. This year, we're proposing a couple of water projects. You can see here, this would be what we're proposing for if interested in an infrastructure project at McCann to do lighting and security. This would be if interested in going for planning for a feasibility study, and this would be code enforcement. So based on this, this is absolutely not a final budget. This is more than three activities, so we obviously need to eliminate, and we are looking for feedback input as much as possible. Here is a list of activities based on meeting with our department heads and our town manager. Most of the input was from the department heads and pulled from conversations from previous years, and also conversations from, input from public hearings we've had in the past. As you'll see here, we're proposing the same code enforcement we'd proposed in prior years. This Parks Playgrounds project, this is a continuation from last year's conversations about investing in the McCann Fields. We are currently slated to spend $80,000 in fiscal year '20 on McCann Fields once it's awarded. And, oh, forgive. And so it was discussed last year, if we are upgrading at McCann Fields, do we want to consider lighting and security as well? The infrastructure for water was birthed out of the new Crane to Main target area. What we learned last year when we were applying for improvements on West Street was that one of the most common ways to pursue roadwork is when you do water upgrades. So we would go in for the water upgrade, and then we would be allowed, as the ancillary surface improvement, to include those paving and drainage, not sidewalks necessarily, but paving and drainage, to be able to do a complete road. And so Cross Street was one of the suggestions last year that we were discussing. And so I brought that up, and then there was the Hamilton Street, River Street, and Crane Street. These were brought up as potential priorities because I know the DPW Subcommittee had brought up their priorities, and they had brought that to the DPW. The DPW, the town manager, had talked about wanting to give a full picture of what those streets' improvements needs were. And so those two, by all means, should be considered, and all three of these meet that Crane to Main beneficiary data. The River, Crane is a good opportunity because the water can, there is no water connection. Heather can speak more to that if she would like. And the Hamilton is, part of that is going to be covered under the TIP project, and it's also, it's the biggest, longest, most expensive. So I'm not sure how much of Hamilton would be able to be covered by CDPG. One of the things we're enjoying about being able to couple with Water Sewer, Chapter 90, is that we can really leverage funds a lot further. And so it's a great opportunity, but if, you know, if we're suggesting Hamilton, but yet we can only cover one-tenth of the cost, is that worth it for the town? The last one here is feasibility study for the transfer station. This was brought up when the Curbside Committee was asking whether CDPG funds could be accessed for future potential transfer station. DHCD made it clear to us that a feasibility study would have to be conducted first, if it would have to have been conducted in order for future funds to be eligible. And so I'm not sure if, backing into timelines, waiting for a feasibility study next fall, winter, spring of '22 is too late down the pipeline, but we wanted to make sure that we included this in case this is a direction the town wants to go. This outlines potential administration and program delivery in detail, and then this goes into prior year's projects. So at this time, I would love to ask if anyone has any comments. For instance, does anyone want to hear from Heather on the potential water projects? Or does anyone have any potential other projects that aren't on our radar screen?
I wouldn't mind hearing from Heather on these projects.
Good evening, everyone. The, I will say in general, the water lines in the area that we're talking about, Crane to Main, that whole location, those are some of our oldest water mains in town. So they are on our radar already to be upgraded. Hamilton Street serves a majority of the town. The water comes down that way, down from West Street and over. So it's a very large water main, that's a 12-inch main. The Crane to, and River Street area is quite interesting. There are limited water mains in that area. Some of them are undersized at six inch, which does not provide good flow, and they're actually disconnected. So there is a section of water main where you're familiar in front of Hyde's property, and there's a section of water main in front of the 12 Crane Street area. But there is a missing section of water main on that road, so it's disconnected. So essentially, you almost have, you know, a disconnected water flow in that area, not providing fire protection in certain locations. I think some of the houses are serviced off of Hamilton Street as opposed to Crane, but just the fact that we don't have a good circular flow would limit flow capacity, and the size of the mains and the age of the mains in that area are extreme, are old, they're in the 1900s. The same is true of Cross. And the reasoning, I think, that the CBG and Community Development looks at water main is that when you replace water main, you replace laterals, you know, you dig up a lot of the road. So it gives you the ability to do more improvements, not just water improvements and road improvements. Of course, you know, with only $400,000, we would be looking, in any of those cases, of coupling with other money. You know, having water still contribute to the project, probably having Chapter 90 or any funds that we could, that the town would be able to put in, would have to be coupled with one of these projects. We are looking at any of these areas over the $400,000 mark to do these roads and improve the water mains. Anybody has any specific questions? I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Not specific question, but just, what do you think which one would be the best, the best to tackle? Which project? Do you have an opinion on that?
Um, I have some opinions. I think trying to tackle the Hamilton Street project before we do the TIP project is too soon. I think we want to leverage the TIP money as far as we can, and upgrading and then not upgrading the one section where the TIP is going to be kind of, I'd rather put the TIP first and then march down on that project. And I think you're going to have to do that project in stages, just because of the financial $400,000 is not going to get you very far on Hamilton Street. Either of the two streets, I know that River and Crane is on the list from the DPW Subcommittee, and it is in very rough shape. So I see a lot of benefit there, but I do understand that there is, it's more difficult to show the benefit to the, to the area and to the residents, to the low-income residents, where Crane would be directly benefiting all the residents that live on that street. Higher population concentration on, I mean, on Cross Street.
One, this is Gus. I'm on, I'm on the phone because I can't, I can't do video right now, I'm using my computer. One thing, I was looking at the beta report, and it says that the Cross Street project would be about 200 grand. I don't know if that would include some of the other things that PEG lists about sidewalks and those kinds of things.
No.
It doesn't.
So when PEG is looking at there, that is only for doing pavement, and it's only for doing the pavement treatment that they're looking at. As soon as we start ripping up the asphalt, because half of that road's already been resurfaced, it doesn't include any drainage, it doesn't include any water lines, it doesn't include any sidewalks.
Okay, that's what I figured. That's what I figured, okay. Does it include engineering?
No.
No. Okay. Would we be able to do that project, would the, would the listing that PEG includes, would that include the engineering and stuff that we would need to do the project?
The $400,000 that we've been, the way we've been doing them now is we usually fund the engineering out of Chapter 90 so that we can start them before she gets the money, because we can't, if, we have to spend so much of the money within that year. So if you were going to use only CDPG money, and PEG can correct me, I believe you'd have to do the design in one, one year, and the construction in the following year. So to, in order to save and be able to move the projects along quicker, we're trying to leverage our funds that we have access to at any time to do them, and do the engineering upfront. And we can also use, you know, we do know if we're going to be replacing water mains, that we could use water money to do the engineering for the whole thing, and then use that subsequent money to, you know, kind of be able to combine the two.
That makes sense, okay.
Just quickly, if I could explain the terms on the engineering. For instance, when we talked about the Parks Playground project for less than $100,000, that wasn't an arbitrary number. You're allowed to do construction and engineering in the same year if the project is less than $100,000. Anything over, then yes, Heather's correct, you have to go year over year.
Okay, which is, which is why we would fund it from CDPG and Chapter 90.
Yeah.
Okay. PEG, would you, could you explain a little bit more about what your thoughts are regarding the McCann project?
Oh, sure.
Or Heather?
Sure, I mean, I think we, we had all discussed whether that would be the ideal project last year as part of the fiscal year '20 award, and decided that, we had talked about doing lighting on a field, we had talked about a couple different aspects of lighting and security, and realized that it's a, it's a large and expensive project. It would have taken up, you know, the entire expense of what we went for. So in the end, last year, if you'll recall, we pursued, we're getting new benches canopy, or new canopies for the benches, we're getting fencing, so we're doing some other small upgrades for about $80,000, and we, again, couldn't have gone over $100,000. So then we were saying, well, this year, maybe we should go for more, and because we're making upgrades to the field, do we want to make it more secure? So there, there was the logic. And we'd talked with Chief Woodson about how to approach security. He was going to work with us with their IT people to be able to come up with a high-level cost estimate for the application.
Okay, thanks, that makes sense.
Gus, I'll just add to that. We've had some problems with vandalism down on that, in that area, especially in the, around the, one of the Little League fields in the shack there, it seems to be getting targeted. So that was part of the idea, is that if we could get some more permanent security features down there and increase the lighting, then maybe we would discourage the vandalism.
What, what type of vandalism?
We had some issues over at the, the call box, I know, that was broken into at one point.
Yeah, it's, it's, great. Where, I guess, call it the call box or the concession stand, they broke into the door, they broke the glass on the window, they basically broke into the building. Broke the door so that it had to be replaced, broke the window so that it had to be replaced, and it's happened more than once.
If we have no other comments, I can move on to the prior year projects. Does anyone else have any suggestions of projects or feedback on the proposed projects? Counselor Daniel?
I just have a question in terms of how much of River and Crane Street would you be talking about repairing?
So we would be looking at the whole target area of River and Crane. I think it's, so basically, from the bridge to the top of Crane Street, to Hamilton Street. From the bridge at River Street to the top of Hamilton Street.
Stretch here, Heather, can you see my mouse as I move it?
Yes, yep. So from in front of...
Russell Harrington.
Russell Harrington, to where Crane hits Hamilton.
Okay, thank you.
And that, that would set us up well, so that, you know, Hamilton is definitely on a target to be addressed, and in the future, when that gets addressed, it will tie into that line, subsequently tying all the new lines together, water lines.
And again, I just want to call out, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Heather, clarification, when, when we do the TIP project downtown, how far up Hamilton Street does that actually go? That only goes to like Edwards, isn't it, roughly?
Yeah, it's going to right before Edwards, I'd say, or just the others, this Main Street side of Edwards.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, okay.
But it does include water main upgrades.
My only comment is that Crane and River Street is on, was on our priority list. I mean, that seemed to be the street that the DPW Subcommittee voted that this is the street that we wanted looked at, so that was, that would be my only comment.
So what I wanted to just call out again is this number here, so 87.17%. Counselor Steve's, I remember last year at a public hearing, you'd asked about adjacent block groups, for instance, this one down here, I didn't at the, at the time have the number. This one's 72.17%. We just are, you know, we'll be doing the work here in West Street, that's going to benefit the water lines that go into this block group. This current proposed project will benefit all of these here. We, as a town, are over 51% low to moderate income, so in theory, we could have a project that benefits the whole town, but it's hard to prove that. And so having a project that's distinctly inside of this block group helps us to be able to call back the beneficiaries to the, to the money spent. And so I, I feel good if the town was pursuing a project inside of this block.
I totally understand that, and while I agree with what Counselor McKenna was saying about, about us talking about River and Crane Street and Hamilton Street, I got to admit that during the course of our discussion, I didn't think of Cross Street. And you're right, that there's a, there's a lot of people on that street, and that street is in pretty bad shape. So unfortunately, most of those cross streets in there are in bad shape. So that neighborhood does need, definitely needs a lot of help. And you're right, that there's a lot of people living up there, so certainly worth considering.
Well, there are a lot of streets in town that need considering. I mean, I had a constituent just ask me the other day about Hudson Avenue, and said it was almost down to dirt at this point. So there are a lot of streets and suburbs that need repair.
That's for sure.
Do we have any other comments at this time? Okay, at this point, I'm going to close the hearing for the fiscal year '21 application, and I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for the, this prior year's application, awards and application.
Before you do, I would like to ask, I noticed that Mike McCall is on here. Mr. McCall, would you have anything you would like to say about the proposals? Any suggestions?
Through you, Ms. Dean to Counselor Steve's, I did sit and go over this with Ms. Blakely and Ms. Dean and Ms. Scrivens at the time, and I did provide some input at that time. I'm comfortable with what has been presented so far this evening. I, as I indicated, I had given any comments at the time, so I have nothing new to add right now.
Okay, thank you.
We're all comfortable moving on? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here, Town Manager. All right, so from the current slide here, part of our obligation in this, the Community Development Block Grant process is to hold multiple hearings, one at least two weeks prior to the application. As mentioned last year, we're trying to do a better job of moving those timelines much farther out to be able to gain any public input and roll it into potential applications. So this will be the first of multiple hearings before the application, and then we're required within the grant, the actual grant years to hold a hearing. So I figured I would just touch on all open and/or pending grant years. Right now, we are, we have fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19 open, and our newest grant related to COVID, the CDBG CV grant. We are still awaiting an award for the fiscal year '20 grant. It normally would have been awarded in July with funds to be released by December at the latest. Unfortunately, they haven't moved on that yet. They're hoping to, but with all of the new money for the COVID grants, I think that's holding things up a bit. So where we are with fiscal year 18, we have funded the code enforcement, commercial rehab, and, and infrastructure for phases two, three, and four using the fiscal year 18 grant, and our contract ends in December. As the town council is aware, at their most recent town council meeting on the 16th, it was approved to move whatever remaining construction funds to administration once we complete the contract for Phase Four with precise paving, and that should happen in the next few weeks. Once that happens, then an amendment will go to DHCD to make those funds, move those funds before the contract ends. Therefore, we won't have to send any money back to DHCD, we'll have spent all of our funds. Fiscal year 19, we're in full swing. We are funding code enforcement. Right now, unfortunately, the, the health inspector position remains available, so we've only had the building inspector funded as of August, when our health inspector resigned. Our health inspections is a reactive position, and our building inspector is a proactive position. We're very proud of these positions and their ability to really help turn around some of the conditions in our low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods, holding our landlords accountable for the safety and well-being of their tenants. We're in the midst of our commercial rehab, 5C commercial rehab. Town Council just approved the use of $12,000 plus to be able to do a project on the Central Street parking lot at 22 Hamilton, that's wonderful. And we're doing the infrastructure for Main Street, that contract was just secured, and the notice to proceed was issued last Thursday. That contract ends next June, and we look forward to doing more commercial rehab and seeing the, the Main Street project completed. We are only one-fifth of the Main Street funds, but again, we think that the use of multiple funding sources to be able to leverage the, the mini entitlement grants that we get is the best use of funds. For fiscal year '20, again, as mentioned, we are waiting for the announcement of those awards. We requested funds for, again, code enforcement. We requested that $80,000 that was mentioned during the fiscal year '21 hearing, the funds to upgrade McCann with some canopies and fencing, which will be lovely. And then we'll be doing the West Street infrastructure, that's a water project, and its ancillary, excuse me, its ancillary benefit is that then we can do surface improvements for drainage. In the, in the midst of all of this, the CDBG CV grant became available. We sought $250,000 on the We sought $250,000 on behalf of ourselves, Sturbridge and Charlton, and we'll be releasing the first funds hopefully as soon as sometime in the next week, by the time it gets into the awardees' hands, it may be three weeks. This is all good news. These grants are up to $10,000 for micro enterprise businesses, anyone defined as five or fewer, including the owners who fall within the low to moderate income, which is the 80% of our Worcester metro median income. We are hoping to see more applicants come through the door and we're hoping to see those funds released relatively quickly, to go through those funds within the next few months. The Quabong Valley CDC or Community Development Corporation has been administering those awards, or the applications and is walking us through the awards process. So, does anyone have any feedback or suggestions of how we could improve on our grant process, our applications, our projects in general?
I just have a couple of comments. Earlier, you said that the Morris Street area had received some, some grants or something, but I don't see anything here identifying Morris, the Morris Street Coombs area. So, I was wondering what, what you were referring to.
I can provide you tomorrow a spreadsheet showing all the streets, sidewalks and utilities that have been invested in, in that target area. I'd provided that, for instance, to the Town Manager when he first came on, just to give some historical data. That was one of the first tools I used when I came onboard to see, how is this money really having an impact in our community? And, you know, looking at, has there been any sort of improvement and turnaround where those dollars are being spent? And, and maybe, you know, the best people to ask would be the people in those neighborhoods. Have they seen any improvement over the last 20 years based on those investments? Happy to send that spreadsheet along.
And the other question I had is of the money that, the CDPG CV money, how much of, is there a percentage that went to Southbridge, Sturbridge and Charlton? Do you know offhand what the percentage is?
We didn't have a fixed percentage. I think what I had mentioned in one of my initial meetings with the Town Council was by percentage, I think South, Southbridge has more businesses than the other neighboring towns, but this is a, a blind process. And so, all applications come in the door, first come, first serve, and it's based on eligibility. And then, it comes to these three representatives of the towns to make sure everything was handled. As it was stated, it would be that they meet the, whatever points of eligibility and then the funds are distributed. I hope to see all that money go out very quickly and I, I hope that we're able to spend it on, I, I hope it falls fairly among the towns.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. There are your grants. Okay, well, with that, I, I'm happy to close the hearing. I always hope for lots of public participation to ensure that the community is confident about how these funds are being spent. I, I look forward to having a hearing again in December. Hopefully, at that time, we'll get more participants. I'm not sure if, because these are remote, that's discouraging for some of the public to attend, but we'll try to get the word out as best we can. These hearings were published in the TNG, in the Telegram and Gazette, two weeks in a row. They were posted on our cable channel, they were posted to our library, our community center and in the town hall. If anyone has, has any suggestions how we can better reach the public to get the word out about public hearings or about any communications, please share with me.
Actually, one thing, unfortunately, this kind of a situation of having poor public outreach, especially for CDPG hearings, but hearings in general, has been a, it's been a track record for many years now, unfortunately. A couple of your predecessors had the same issue, Peg, so don't, don't take it personally. One thing, I was thinking, maybe, maybe what we might want to do is, as far as the projects that you're proposing for Hamilton, Crane, Cross Street, I wonder if we would have put flyers, actually stick flyers up on phone poles down in that neighborhood? People who are walking down the street there might actually see them and, especially if they're in Spanish, there's a lot, a lot of Hispanic people down in the neighborhood. If we did both English and Spanish down in that area and some of the stores down in that area, maybe that would attract some interest. I don't know.
That's a great suggestion. Any other suggestions?
My only suggestion for the McCann Field is maybe we should just hire somebody to, to hang out down there and make sure that, it might be cheaper, I'll just hire somebody to patrol the area, a night watch man. But, that's all. Thank you very much for the hearing.
You're welcome. I, I do understand that there has been some increased security techniques down there just to try to improve the, the safety of our, our citizens and the equipment. And with that, I guess I will close the hearing. I want to thank anybody who, who attended this evening and this has been recorded. I will make it available to the Cable Access, the YouTube channel through the Cable Access office. Thank you. Have a good night. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Peg, you too.